Okay. Let me put my glasses on. I called to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for July 25, 2017 at 6:35 PM. Hello, everyone, and happy Hot Fudge Sunday Day. I think that's where we all need to be after this. And it's also National Hire a Veteran Day, which is perfect for what we're going to be doing here tonight. Definitely take advantage of that opportunity. Tonight, we're going to appoint two new council members, so stay tuned. On our consent agenda is approval of the July 11, 2017 Regular Minutes Public Works Monthly Reports for June of 2017. Our regular agenda item is approval of the Trolley Trail Bridge Intergovernmental Agreement, also called an IGA, with Clackamas County and Oregon Department of Transportation, also called ODOT. So I'm going to mix things up a little bit because we have a counselor that is on the phone that's kind of in a tight timeframe here. So we'll go ahead and call the order, roll call, flag, salute. We're going to do a recognition, and then we're going to listen to business from the audience for those that want to address the council position appointments. And then we'll do the appointments, and then we'll finish with the rest of the business from the audience. So Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Neese?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Counselor McMahon?
I am here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. So the first thing we're going to do is recognition of Veterans of Foreign War, VFW, Police Officer of the Year. So I believe Chief Jolly's going to come up?
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity for us to be able to celebrate one of our officers. Tonight, I have with me four members of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Chapter, the VFW, out of Oregon City, Chapter 1324. We've been working with-
Can you hear me still?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I can't hear you, sir.
Okay. I don't know how we can fix that. It's Jeff Jolly speaking about our recognition.
How about you turn it around?
Here we go. Maybe that'll work.
So we have the members from the Oregon City Chapter here to honor one of our police officers, Dustin Olson, as Officer of the Year. It's taken some time to get to this point and get everybody organized. And we appreciate our Veterans of Foreign Wars. If you're not aware, this organization was founded in 1899 as a result of the Spanish-American War to take care of the needs of veterans who were sick or injured and came back from fighting a war on a foreign soil, which is the main criteria for being a member even today. I'm proud to say we support them and our partnership with them.
Can I hear you again?
Yep, hold on.
We support them and our partnership with them, as well as we value the partnerships we have with other government agencies and our partners here in the area. You'll be proud to know that we have six veterans that are employed with the Gladstone City Police Department, men and a woman, that are members and serving our community here in Gladstone. So we're very proud of our relationship with veterans organizations. Without further ado, I'll introduce past Commander DJ Ruger, who will do the introductions and present the award.
Commander.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm not going to mention that. Officer Olson, would you come forward, bring your family also, members of the public? I have with me our new post commander, Bill Trumbull, his senior vice commander, Dale Miller, and Larry Mosley, who worked our adjutant and has now been replaced by another. We just had to change him. We are honored when the chief of police of one of our cities makes the nomination of one of their officers, then we can recognize them as officers here.
Yes, just hang on.
You're out there serving the community every day, putting your life on the line. You're watching us back at home, and you need to be up here, too. So we're very proud to recognize you as Gladstone Police Officer of the Year. Congratulations. Chief? Come on in here. Now, I apologize. We have a very nice letter of nomination, and I left it on the desk down there. Let's get someone to take pictures and get the family in.
For sure.
Somebody else knows how to work this thing.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your service.
You guys, too. Thanks for-
Thank you very much for your service, gentlemen. All right. So do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So first, we'll do business from the audience from anyone that wants to speak on the city council appointments.
Mindy Garlington?
Good morning or evening. Mindy Garlington, 7000 Debbie Court, here in Gladstone. I would like to, I'm going to talk just for a moment about our process, what we did this week. I would like to thank this council and the city staff for the opportunity to be included in the interview process for the two vacant seats in the office of city council. The candidates we interviewed were experienced and educated neighbors wanting to help in the process that this community relies on. As a volunteer in this community, it certainly does put a smile on my face. I wanted to share my words of thought that I had in the evening between the interviews and our vote the next morning. After careful thought, I would be inclined to question both Tom and Tammy, should either of them consider former counselor Steve Johnson as a candidate. You both were voted in by the awesome process of the American people's right to vote. The voters in this city have spoken, and that should be the end of it. It does not matter in any election how many you win or lose by, you are either in or you are out. We must respect the vote of the people. Referring to paragraph 32 of our city charter, "An office shall be deemed vacant upon the incumbent's death, court-ordered incompetence, conviction of a felony, other offense pertaining to this office, unlawful destruction of public records, resignation, recall from office, etc." This speaks of our council, which includes our mayor as an office, not as an individual seat. Let's not twist that around for our own judgment. The fact is there are far too many questions and not enough answers to go down that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item is the appointment-
Nope.
Hold on. One more. Excuse me.
Bill Osburn?
Can you still hear Pat?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Bill Osburn, 7160 Monte Verde. I just wanted to thank everybody for the open process we had in the interviews for the council applicants. It was nice to see how everything was right there for us to see, even when you were picking the residents last week, or last meeting, I guess it was, just doing it random, so there was no favoritism. That seems to be a big theme of the old regime that was here, was a lot of favoritism and such. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. Also, building on what Mindy said about voting for people who'd been recalled, you got a couple of good people who were recommended by a panel, and I'm hoping they're approved. Everybody here is elected to represent the people of Gladstone, and I would think that voting for somebody who the residents had recalled would not be representing those people well. So also, just wanted to let everybody know, we had the salt cleanup last weekend and was able to clean up a lot of other garbage in the city here, so looking forward to seeing some of you guys next month at our next one.
Long as it's cooler outside. We'll be all over that.
I hope so. The weather, although nice, isn't nice for running up and down the trails. That's really affected how many people we have, so hopefully it will be on a cooler day in August, and definitely, I would think, in September will be a lot cooler.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. So the next item is the appointment of two new council members. Does staff have any reports? I will just summarize for you. Under additional, or under correspondence, I would let you know that you received a letter from Libby Wentz and Susan Liston that are-
Mr. Pat?
Yes, barely.
That are in relation to this process as well, and you have those on your dais. So the council did, or excuse me, the committee did have interviews last week. We interviewed seven people. The interview committee consisted of Mayor Stimple, Counselor Mercero, two citizens, Les Poole, Mindy Garlington, and two staff members, myself and Marna Barnes. We interviewed seven candidates, Matthew Ferreira, Matt Tracy, Dennis McCarty, Frank Hernandez, Michael Milch, Malachi, and Steve Johnson. And by consensus, the committee chose Frank Hernandez and Michael Milch. And we forwarded those names to you, and this evening, the city council could choose to accept that recommendation, or you could each choose the two that you want, and the majority would be our two new appointed city counselors. All right. So how would you all like to proceed with this?
I would like to make a vote.
Where, we each vote individually?
Yes.
On each person? Is that what you're saying, Tom?
I'm saying that however, we can either do one applicant at a time, that was who we vote for, and/or do both applicants that we're friends.
Can you hear, can you hear Pat?
No. If you could just tell me who he's voting for, and then when I need to vote.
Okay. All right. So we do have a sheet that we could put up on the board, and each counselor and the mayor could pick their two, and we'll see how it tallies.
Okay.
But I believe you need to have a consensus to do the vote first, or you have a consensus to accept the committee recommendation.
I was leaning towards the second consensus, you know, or my suggestion is to accept the subcommittee's recommendation.
So it's one vote, one accept the recommendation? Oh, I vote to accept the recommendation.
Pat, do you want to accept the recommendation, or do you want to take the consensus of what the committee has said?
I want to vote.
Okay. Linda?
I would like to vote, too.
All right. Then I guess we do the vote.
Tom, do you want to vote as well?
That was his idea.
Okay. Okay. Oh, you don't have it up there? Okay. All right. So I think if you want to just tally up there, we will go ahead and start with Counselor Mercero.
So are we, for clarification, are we going to announce a name for like-
One first?
For position one, and then position three, or say we want a certain person for one and another person for three?
I don't know.
You know, I don't think it matters simply because, if I recall correctly, the terms-
They're the same.
The same length.
Right.
Yeah. So in my view, I think you could simply, in this case, each name two people and determine whether any of those two get a majority. I think as we did last time as well, and then decide, you know, whether you want to do it randomly, or at that point, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think that the number in this case wouldn't matter, the position number, simply because of the same length of term. That's, so for, I'm sorry, that's a good point. If Steve Johnson were to be appointed, he could not be appointed to the position he previously held. That would be prohibited. But a little bit of a disagreement with Ms. Garlington, I think he could be appointed to the, I guess it would be Kinseykman seat.
Well, then why don't we do one first? Yes. So position number one is the one that Mr. Johnson could be considered for. He cannot be considered for-
From a legal point of view.
For position three. All right. So then I guess we take a roll call.
Counsel, counsel? Counsel position one, Counselor Neese, Michael Milch.
Or Milch.
Milch. Make sure I'm-
Counselor Reisner?
Frank Hernandez.
Counselor McMahon?
Michael Milch.
Counselor Mercero?
Michael Milch.
Mayor Stimple?
Michael Milch.
So that's for position one?
That's for position one. Okay. All right. So now we're on to position three.
Counsel position number three, Counselor Neese, Matt Tracy. Counselor Reisner?
Mr. Hernandez again.
Matt Tracy.
Counselor Mercero?
Matt Tracy.
Mayor Stimple?
Frank Hernandez. All right. So it's Matt Tracy.
And, uh-
And Michael Milch.
Welcome aboard. I want to thank everybody. So as we've done before, I think, just as a matter of official process, make a motion to officially appoint them, and then we can swear them in.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael Milch and Matt Tracy.
I'll second that.
I would like to take a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Neese? Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
Uh, yes.
It's a roll call. Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple? No.
All right. Matt Tracy and Michael Milch. So we need to have them sworn in? Yes.
Next up, I believe.
We have Judge here this evening to do the swearing in, so I believe we will have Michael Milch come up first. We do have an oath of office. Tammy has that for you.
While they're doing that, I want to thank everybody that applied, and also for Les Poole and Mindy Garlington, and Tammy and Tom for spending time last week in interviews. I appreciated your openness, you know, suggesting this, and I think it went well. I appreciate it.
And I want to apologize to the committee that took the time to do this and then were disregarded. Not that I don't agree with the, we had great people that applied, but I think it's important that we listen to our advisory committees, and this was an example where we did not. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Milch?
Okay, am I needed anymore?
Nope, you're not.
The two counselors, is that correct?
Correct. You are not.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going offline. Need my fiancee.
Okay. Good luck.
I, Michael Milch-
I, Michael Milch-
-do solemnly swear-
-in solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution-
-that I will support the Constitution-
-of the United States-
-of the United States-
-and of the State of Oregon-
-and of the State of Oregon-
-and the Charter-
-and the Charter-
-and the Municipal Code-
-and the Municipal Code-
-of the City of Gladstone-
-of the City of Gladstone-
-and that I will-
-and that I will-
-to the best of my ability-
-to the best of my ability-
-perform the duties of city councilors-
-perform the duties of city councilors-
-for the City of Gladstone, Oregon-
-for the City of Gladstone, Oregon-
-during my entire term-
-during my entire term-
-so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I don't know if you're going to be too happy about that when you see the pile in front of your chair.
We have some welcoming gifts for you, some reading, light reading material.
Light reading.
We're going to give him one right here. Come, please, take your seat.
So he's in this position. So I don't know where everybody's going to sit. Okay.
You can do it next week, or next month or so, okay?
Sure.
Because I didn't take you on all of these shows.
And the State of Oregon-
State of Oregon.
-and the Charter and the Municipal Code-
And the Charter and the Municipal Code.
-of the City of Gladstone-
Of the City of Gladstone.
-and that I will-
And that I will-
-to the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
-perform the duties of city councilors-
Perform the duties of city councilors.
-for the City of Gladstone, Oregon-
For the City of Gladstone, Oregon.
-during my entire term-
During my entire term.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Get comfy.
Just wrap it on.
Going for a ride. Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Your Honor, for coming in.
And here's your light reading material.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Get comfortable, folks.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So the next thing is business from the audience continued. We got some yellow cards over there.
Greg Alexander?
First of all, I agree with the mayor. You guys should have used, you had that committee, you put them together, you should have used the recommendations. I don't know why you do waste everybody's time and not do that. But what I'm here to talk about is anybody, I think, sitting up there, anybody, I don't care if you're on the Planning Commission, if you're on the City Council or what, you should not get on Nextdoor, as one of the apps did on the Planning Commission, Libby Wentz, and start disrespecting the citizens, saying they're confused, belittling the parks and library people. And she calls everyone on there a liar if you don't agree with her. Now, she's representing, she sits up in one of those seats. She's very confrontational, and when asked to back up her statements by many people, she can't even back them up. She doesn't have any facts. She only goes off what Steve Johnson tells her, and she can't explain it or back it up. People want to know, and again, from my batting record, you can tell, I know what people out here want and know, and I talked to a lot of them. And the next thing they asked me was, is there any way to get Libby removed from the Planning Commission? Where she's always uninformed, never up to speed, and hardly any input, can't even be bothered to walk the property, she voted on the last Planning Commission meeting at her own admittance. She questions a democratic process and believes the last election was a coup. Nisa Hamba on Nextdoor said it best when she said, "How can a public official have time to wreak havoc on social media when she should be spending time updating our municipal code to protect our community from greedy development people?" Myself and citizens question Libby's qualifications to even be on the Planning Commission and how she was put there over more qualified people. I can tell you, a lot of people don't need people like Libby representing our community or starting problems on Nextdoor within the community.
Thank you.
And nobody up there should be on Nextdoor spouting what she spouts.
Thank you. Could, next time, could you make sure we do the timer? Okay, next.
Bob Everett?
Bob Everett, 18235 Stonewood Drive, 325 Portland Avenue. And welcome, Michael, Matt. Good luck and everything else. And I'm here, I'll try to lighten it up a little bit, because I am here for the festival again, representing Rotary and the festival. And it is a week and a half away, and we've got a lot going on. And we hope that we get a lot of participation from the city and from the people of Gladstone. We still have, we still have the pie baking contest, the chili baking contest, and I think we'll have lots of great entries for that then, too. Come on out for the parade and all the other events and movie in the park. And I hope to see everyone there. At some time, I'll be running around doing whatever I can do. And thanks again for everyone and all the sponsors, and we should have a lot of fun. Just something I think the city might need. Anyway, thank you.
I'm in the chili cook-off, but we haven't received any information on how much, when-
We just finalized everything.
It would be good to have that before the chili cook-off, guys.
Oh, we will get it.
All right.
Okay. It is, it is on the website also. So, yeah.
The instructions?
Yeah, the instructions.
Yeah, they should be updated.
And Mayor Stimple, we would like you to open the festival. I'm going to, I will speak a little bit that evening, and also, we'd like you to open it, and also sort of introduce the grand marshal then, too, afterwards, too.
Yeah, get me the information, when and where.
Well, we will show you the route.
I'm going to be there all weekend.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it very much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Thank you.
And we do have, so far, that I'm aware of, at least two entries.
Yep. Ooh.
The mayor, yeah, the mayor's got competition.
All right. Next, Libby Wentz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name's Libby Wentz, 545 Collins Crest. I'm commenting about the election, not the election, the appointment of these two gentlemen. I think they're good choices, and I know they'll serve well. Also, we, the people who serve on committees and commissions for the city, understand that we're making recommendations and not mandates. We don't expect what we, what advice or what we tell you guys will necessarily happen. And then traffic safety, certainly, things that we thought haven't been approved, which is perfectly okay. You are the people we elected, not the people on the advisory. The people on the advisory committee were not elected, they were ran for the selection of the two new appointments. The advisory committee was randomly drawn from a hat, hardly elected people to make our decisions for the city. I also think that your comment regarding not getting Frank Hernandez appointed is a slap in the face to the two men who were appointed. And I'm not going to touch anything that Greg Alexander said, because it's a typical drivel that goes on Nextdoor, which is hardly ever factual, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So the first thing is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Any further discussion? Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Neese. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda approved. Is there any correspondence? Just the two items I mentioned earlier in regards to Susan Liston and Libby Wentz. All right. Any discussion on correspondence? Nope. All right. First item on our regular agenda is approval of Trolley Trail Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, with Clackamas County and Oregon Department of Transportation, also known as ODOT. IGA, with Clackamas County and Oregon Department of Transportation, also known as ODOT. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm actually very excited to bring this to you this evening. We've been waiting for about a year, as the contract, the IGA was sitting in Department of Justice, so you know, once it hits the DOJ, that it's going to be there a while, and it's been vetted very thoroughly, and it's, it's a good partnership between three jurisdictions. You have the state, the county, and the city. And back in 2014, we lost our Trolley Trail Bridge. We applied for funding with ODOT through their Surface Transportation Program Funds, and Metro, regional funding. We received a grant for about $202,000.
Yeah, with the match, it was like $230,000.
Correct. The city has a match that is in your packet here, and I believe it is $23,000. So the total cost estimate of the project is $225,000, and the city's match is a not-to-exceed amount. We do have it in our current budget from the Street System Improvement and Project Line item. Now, these funds are federal funds going through the state, so the feasibility study has to be done through a local agency that's certified to do this process. And Clackamas County has that in their engineering department. We met with them several times, and they said they'd be happy to administer the feasibility study grant for us. So what we're asking for this evening is for you to allow me to sign this IGA, and then Public Works Director Jim Wynott and I would help Clackamas County go through the RFP process to select the consultant that will actually do the feasibility study, and then the county will oversee that, giving the city updates throughout the process. We are looking that it's probably gonna take about a year to complete the feasibility study, and some of the items they'll be looking at is evaluating the replacement costs, possible bridge locations, any environmental issues, any potential maintenance and upkeep costs. They will bring that back to us. Our intent is to then apply for funds for the actual replacement of the bridge, and we would hope that we could do that through the same process. Clackamas County has also identified this as a critical connection project on the Clackamas County Ten Year Active Transportation Strategy Project, which I think is great, because they're bringing Gladstone in, and with all the interconnectivity that this, this trail has, there's a lot of potential for funding in the future, so... If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
This has actually been a four-and-a-half-year process, not just a year. Very long.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes?
The documentation a couple of times uses the term rebuilding or replacing. Just to make it clear, we're not talking about attempting to restore the bridge that had been there before. This is really to put in a new bridge of some variety, and since you mentioned location, I assume that we're not even specifically tied to the location of the previous bridge. Is that accurate?
Well, the original grant application was for a refurbishment of an existing bridge, and we received the grant, and then the bridge fell down.
Right.
So we had to go back and request that it be changed to a refurbish or replace. So it would be a replacement. The bridge that fell is cut into many pieces.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And it will be in the approximate same vicinity, but it may not be that exact connection-to-connection, but that is the study area, yes.
Any other questions?
Mayor Stimple has worked on this for, I thought it was more than four-and-a-half years.
Sure feels like it.
She's worked diligently on this for four-and-a-half years, long before she was a counselor, or mayor, or whatever. She worked very hard on this, and I stood by and applauded a little bit, but it was involved very little. But I believe it's a good project, and I'm glad our interim administrator knows the cost. It will cost us 22 grands approximately, but I think it's a good thing to do. If nothing else, it will get more communication and people from the Oregon City Area coming over to, in fact, Gladstone, and sharing our resources and so on, so... I think it's a, I support it 100%.
And clarification, I believe originally it was not just, it wasn't necessarily a cash match, but it could be an in-kind match as well.
That's correct, so the time that I and the Public Works Director attribute toward this could be part of that match.
Yeah. Any other questions? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward on the IGA.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese and seconded by Counselor Reisner, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, so that's it for our regular agenda. Do we have any business carried forward?
Okay, yeah. Does that be okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
I would like to bring forward, and I had originally made a motion a while back pertaining to Ms. Jackie Betts, that we give her six months before moving forward on the, moving the position from interim to city administrator. What I'd like to do is rescind that motion, and ask if we could reevaluate and move forward, and do a two-year contract with Jackie, and make her the official city administrator. And I would like to work with the attorney on the contract, and Pat McMahon has asked if he could be a part of that on the contract, and we would like to be able to move forward with that, with your help David. Is there any objections to that?
Do you wanna make?
Well, I, discussing?
I was gonna do motions and then discussion, or however you guys wanna do that.
Well, no, I, I like the idea, what I would like, and have all the confidence in Ms. Betts, that you do, I hope, what I would like to suggest is give our new members a chance to meet with her, and maybe at the next meeting, we revisit this, so that they aren't just, you know, thrown into, to the mix, thrown on, and they're already in the hot seat. Welcome aboard, gentlemen.
And, and I have-
So that would be my, that would be my suggestion.
And I have no problem with that, so if we set the date August 8th for the next meeting?
So, I'd say that's my suggestion, I'd like to hear from, from the others if they have any other-
I have no objection to that.
Any other thoughts or questions?
I'm ready to move forward, because we've got a lot of stuff on the table, and it would be nice to have a firm staff that can move these things forward, instead of always tentatively tiptoeing around the interim title, or acting title. It would be nice to have things firmed up. Michael?
I think there's a perception from some in the city that we sped through the process of filling some of the department head seats and other positions in the past, and I'm not sure that, that it would hurt to wait a little while longer. I would like, and again, this is no reflection of my feelings about Ms. Betts's qualifications for the position, I, I don't wanna tip my hand, but on, on how I would vote, but... I don't think I'm prepared to jump forward with the process as quickly as, as Counselor Neese is suggesting. I think I'd like to, I'd like that month to meet with her, and know, you know, do that in a more informed way. This was not on the original agenda tonight, and, and I'm not prepared to jump forward that, that quickly.
Okay, Matt?
I kind of echo Counselor Milch's concerns about that, but I also feel like, to Counselor Reisner's opinion about this, you need some stability. What I've witnessed over my time here is some stability that, that was a lot, there was a lack of stability. So I can understand the urgency and need to do that. I would be glad to meet with Ms. Betts anytime, have these discussions about some of the things, but right now, I'm kinda reeling from the process in which I was placed into this seat. I've gotta tell you that in years of working around politics, I've never seen this process quite like tonight. Typically, you don't walk in, and so, I'm kinda caught off guard right now. You don't walk in and then see, you know, dissension, discontent, discontentment and stuff, and then you get thrown into a seat, I've never experienced this. And I've been around politics for a while. So let me kinda get away from reeling from that. I'm very much in support of Counselor Milch's ideas about this, let, you need to grow it on the vine a little while, but I think that Ms. Betts is probably very qualified, and I do think that the stability needs to be brought to the city council and to the city government, so that we can get on with, as you said, this large amount of reading material and everything that everybody else is doing in, in the neighborhoods to support this council and support this city. So I think I'll land on that.
Tom?
At this point, we originally agreed to six months. I think that there's a possibility of shortening that, but at this point, within the six months someplace, you know, we can agree or disagree on it, and I'm in support of that.
So can we relook at it in one month?
I'd agree to that.
Would that be satisfactory?
Yes, I would, I would like to say in one month.
That'd be fair with me.
Okay.
Okay, well then we'll relook at it in one month.
Definitely.
Because one of the things, I mean, we, and as Mayor Stimple said, we have got a lot of projects going, and we need to have stability in the administrative office, as well as Jackie needs to move forward to be able to hire a second person. We have promoted Tammy Bannick, and now we have another vacant position, and with the projects we have going, Jackie is going to need lots of help, and she's gonna need someone who has background and knowledge as far as land use, RFPs, and where we can continue to be as transparent as we can to all of you. And that's the reason why I'm asking. I don't wanna put her in a situation where she is getting overwhelmed, and where we're lacking for help for her. And so I really want us all to think about that, and be very supportive, because she's got a lot on her plate. She's discovered a lot of things, she's trying to bring us in as far as our finances, what we need to do, what we shouldn't do. So I really commend her for the ability of what she's done in a short very, short period of time.
Alright, any more business carried forward? Alright, business from the council. Mr. Mistro?
I've gotten none at this time.
Mr. Reisner? Or Counselor Reisner?
Recently, I can't remember if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, Counselor Neese mentioned that it'd been several years since some of our contract services had been reviewed, and, including our, our legal service, or, you know.
It's a long time.
Yeah, and so I was, would like to ask that we sit down, ask for permission from, from the council, or get a consensus that it would be okay for a couple of us to sit down with our, our legal team, and review that, take a look at it. I know we do have a contract with VEH, and I would like to, to volunteer to, to be on that, for better words, subcommittee to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I thought we both were, and that we were gonna be doing that shortly.
But, yeah, I thought it would be, and you're right, we did, I think, had a short discussion, I think it was last month, but I don't think we, we got a consensus from the, the council that it was okay to, to do that.
Correct.
And now that, you know, we're, we're back up to full complement, I wanted to, you know, include our, our new members, and in the discussion, and also the, the head nodding or the, the approval, but, you know, we don't need, I don't think, a formal motion, so that's why I bring it up again.
Do you wanna wait till August 8th and bring it up again?
Well, I don't, I don't, being it's something that's small, I don't know if that's necessary, unless somebody else does, you know, it's up to, it's up to the council as to, you know, we go forward with it in the next couple of weeks before we meet again, or if you'd like to wait. But I, I think we could start now. As of Wednesday, I'll be done with summer school. I currently have, pretty much my afternoon's open, but after the, the 2nd through the, what'd it be? The 26th, I think it is, that Friday, I'm off till school starts again on the 28th of next month. And so I'll be more, I'd be free year, sooner than later, is what I'm hearing.
Why don't we do that then, why don't we wait until after year, where you have more free time?
Well, yeah, we can, but if we get permission now, then we can kinda set up meetings between now and then, if that's conducive to the rest of the council.
Okay. Okay.
So, yes, no, maybe? Sorry, I don't mean to put everybody on the spot.
No, I have a question, are you forming a subcommittee, is that, is that what we're doing, or are you just?
No, we're just evaluating, it's an evaluation, it's just reviewing fees and, and cost and contract.
Is the, is the thought?
It's from opinion, I say yes, we're not putting a motion on the table, are we?
No.
So, yeah.
Okay.
And to be clear, you're not making the suggestion that we review who we have as city attorney, and change city attorneys at this time, you wanna, you wanna review the, the contract with the existing attorney?
Correct. It's something that we really haven't done, I think, at least I can't remember, and, please correct me if I'm wrong, that we really haven't done some kind of, just sit down and, and chat on an, on an official. I know, like, you know, we've had lunch on occasion.
We've met a couple of times, that's right.
And, and I believe you've done that with some of the other counselors.
Yeah, but never in anything other than just, you know, I try to make myself available to clients, obviously, so...
Exactly, and you've always been great at doing that, so...
Fine by me.
Might I ask a question about, so in a subcommittee context, would you potentially be looking at forecasting for services, so that we would have a better idea on budgeting for, for future legal services, or are you just?
Well, not, not at this meeting, that would-
I mean, in a, in a subcommittee context.
Well, probably in the future, yeah, if that's something that, what, what Counselor Neese had brought up about, you know, I mean, had, even I think he mentioned a, maybe, you know, an RFP, but we were like, well, wait a minute, you know, let's, let's sit down and talk first, and then we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
Is, is kinda what my thought was, but, and again, that's why I'm bringing it up, is to kinda get some feedback from, from the rest of you, as to if, if I'm off base, or if there's something else that you would, you know, in another direction you think we should go.
I'm fine with it.
And I'll, and I'll be glad to come back, and, and, you know, not necessarily, you know, report per se, but bring up the speed as to what we talked about, and so you're not left out in the dark.
Well, I think because of our history, that it's important that we have a process in place, and that we have it either on a five-year rotation, or a three-year rotation, or something, so that we can depend on the continual reviews.
Yes, and that's something we have not done.
No, we have not done that, not at all.
And that's what it's about.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, quite honestly, I think it's a very fair thing. I mean, this, my office in one incarnation or another has been your city of journey for thirty-some years.
Well, it wasn't so close to forty, probably.
Yeah, I mean, Jack Hammond, you know, that's, that was the lineage there, if you will.
Yeah.
So I, no, I think it's absolutely appropriate.
Yeah, we have a lot of contracts like that, that are just going on and on and on, without any checks and balances, so... without any checks and balances, so. Okay, anything else?
Then, um-
They've said yes.
What's that?
I said they've said yes.
Yes. No, just as Dr. Bob mentioned, you know, weekend after next, we've got the big celebration. We still have plenty of room for any other chili makers out there.
No.
That, the, the mayor has been really adamant about wanting some competition.
No, I haven't actually.
And look forward to seeing you at the parade, at the car show, all the other good festivities. I guess we even have the, what's it, the Gladman Challenge? I can't remember the, the name of that.
Gladiator Challenge.
The Gladiator Challenge, so, so, you know, from young to old, the, the groups put together a great, great thing, so.
Well, and some people may want to have chili in it because mine is called biohazard, so we don't want mine to be the only choice.
We, we had six last year. I'm anticipating that we're going to have more than six. I have a feeling, because we've had a lot of people come and ask about it, so I, I think we're going to have good competition.
Same here, same here.
Okay, we'll do that when we get, actually, we're doing, we're at that end now, so. Councilor Milch, do you have any business or would like to talk about your view of being counselor?
I was just trying to look something up on next door Gladstone.
Yes, no, no iPads allowed.
At one time, the city talked about buying iPads for every council member in order to use the new-
That's not going to happen now.
That, that kind of got nixed recently.
I'd need to have my son sitting here showing me how to use it the whole time, so.
I, I think, I think Bill Alexander, with all respect, you may have misquoted the comment that came from the citizen in regard to Ms. Wentz, who I think suggested that she better spend her time home rewriting the, the city's comprehensive plan. And as part of my homework preparing for this, the possibility of being in this position, I read Gladstone's comprehensive plan, which was adopted in April of 1979. And I had a concern that a document adopted that long ago, and only amended occasionally to update zoning in, in particular places, might not be terribly up to date, and that there was a need for it to be amended and, and changed and updated. And I'm surprised to find, and I think you would be too, if you read it, how contemporary it sounds. It speaks of the need for bicycle and pedestrian-friendly transportation. It speaks of the need for mixed-use development in the downtown core. It speaks heavily of the preservation of environmental features in the community. The same kinds of things that some people think are, you know, trendy, new age Portland, metro kind of ideas that have been forced on our community. And in fact, the people who, back in the early 70s, prepared this document, and, and maintained it, and, and updated it to, to extent, to some extent throughout the years, have created a, a pretty good document. So I don't think that any member of the planning commission needs to feel bad about not spending their time amending that document. And, and I'm glad that we have it. And, and I think we, as a council, ought to, ought to review it and see how the actions that we take really affirm the position that 40 years ago, citizens in this committee, in this, in this community worked together to develop, to, to really, some, some people describe the comprehensive plan as the constitution for the city, and it, and it almost has that role, and I think it's, it's as good for us today as it was back then. Do you want to tell me, you want me to share some things about myself now?
Glad I think I get to respond.
No, 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 Greg.
My name's Greg Alexander, I'm not Bill Alexander.
Oh, sorry.
Not that she has to update me or anything. Pete Grommick first said, why does she have time to be wreaking havoc? That is word for word, right there.
Okay, thank you.
So that was the point, not that she has to be updated to council, that you don't have to wreak havoc.
Okay, thank you.
I, I find that next door Gladstone sometimes plays a, a good role, positive role, in, in informing people, and, you know, and I know that sometimes we get on each other pretty hard in there, so I hope we can all, you know, keep it under control in using that, that tool. This is my first experience in, not even elected, but appointed government. But as I shared with the, with the interviewing committee last week, they asked one of the, to give me one reason why I wanted to be involved in the city of Gladstone, I gave them two reasons. Their names are Maddie and Austin, my grandchildren. They moved here in 2009, and we followed them here two years ago. They used to live with us, and now they live with their family here. And I volunteered at their school when they went to GCCF, and later all through their terms at, at John Wetton Elementary. I've followed their concerns about getting a new library in the community, and tried to stay informed about that process and what it's been through the years. And this is the first time I've lived in a city where I felt it was small enough and tight enough and had a good enough process of, of, of city government that I could be involved and make a difference, and that motivated, motivated me to do that. I'm, I was a, graduated with a degree in mathematics from the University of California, San Diego, and later got a degree in religious education, master's degree in religious education from the School of Theology in Claremont, California. The first half of my professional career was as a religious educator in churches in Southern California. And then the second half of my career, I went back to my mathematics background and was a, I worked for an actuarial consulting firm doing small business retirement plan actuarial work. And for the last four years there, I was the owner of that firm. But back in the 90s, I decided that, that city government and city planning and urban development were things that I wanted to know more about. And in, in the years since I was appointed to the Downtown Revitalization Committee, I bought a stack of books about this high, covering all those issues. And I hope that that will be a good education for doing this job, and I'm happy to serve you.
Thank you. Matt?
So, my name's Matt Tracy, and it has occurred to me that nobody knows who I am. So what I'm going to do here really quickly is give you a little bit of a background. I do work for Metro. I work as the transfer station operations planner for Metro. So the long lines, though, are not my fault. I'm the one who solves the, the problems with that station and trying to keep the lines shorter than they are. Quite frankly, the reason the station looks like that, and we have long lines, is we are over capacity. This area is growing extremely fast. And that's part of the reason why I wanted to step up and throw my hat in the ring for this position. Because I, I came out of the North Portland area, I, I've lived in Portland since 1990. I came out of the service. I was in the US Army as a Vietnamese linguist. I worked in Field Station Cunia. If any of you have seen the movie Snowden, when he refers to an airplane factory, as he's standing in this really big, beautiful cavernous, very cool, high-tech room. I did work in that, that field station, and it's called Field Station Cunia. It's nowhere near as cool as it is in the movie. In fact, it's, it was pretty terrible. But that aside, came out in 1990, went to school at Portland State University, got a degree in political science and sociology, followed that up with a second degree, a master's degree in public administration, and I've been working off and on in the public sector for the last 20, about 22 years. I did leave the public sector a number of times to work in the private sector, so I feel like I have a little bit of the balance. And one of the things I learned in my experience in government is, first and foremost for me, government should not be a burden on its citizens. And I feel like as I look at Gladstone and I see Clackamas County, Multnomah County, Metro, all of these different governing agencies, the one thing I think I see about the Gladstone City Council and the Gladstone Government is that try, 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 and keep trying. And though some may feel there's some burden placed on them by this governing council, I don't think that's the intent. And that's why I felt like throwing my, my hat in the ring. That along with the fact that I've been able to build bridges in my previous career between government and business, and I've done, I've had some successes. I've, I've managed a $1 million grant where I had to work with multiple waste hauling businesses. I've, I've managed grant monies for the exploration of renewable fuels on the president and board of directors for the Clean Cities Coalition here at Columbia Willamette Clean Cities Coalition. So one of the things I enjoy is getting out and talking to folks and having them come to me and point their finger and say, I can't believe you did this. And sometimes that conversation takes a turn toward, oh, you weren't really the one that did it, you were work, okay. And then we start to communicate. And that's what I want to invite everybody in this room and, and abroad to do with me. Come up to me and tell me what's wrong today. And I'm very happy to, to take that in and process it. I'm, I'm, I want to be very respectful to you. I want you to pay me respect, just as though we're all living in the same community with the same goals and wanting to make this community the best it can be. That's the team I want to be on. So I'll just leave it with that, and be glad to answer any questions, anytime on the street, see me in the parking lot, or at the library, whatever. And I will be reaching out as much as I can to, to speak to all of you who are obviously very active citizens in this city. Thank you very much for your support.
Well, I want to warn you that when you go to Safeway and go grocery shopping, it's no longer going to be a 15-minute trip. It's going to be a two-hour trip. So be prepared.
If people recognize me from the transfer station, I'll be in Safeway for 45 minutes just to get a cup of coffee.
So you're used to it, alright. Councilor Neese?
I just want to invite everyone Saturday to the opening of the 24-Hour Fitness. It's exciting, so I hope that you will come join us. 10 o'clock, they're going to be doing the ribbon cutting and lots of activities going on there that morning, and we're excited to have them as part of our community.
Do you want to ask?
Oh, okay. So, yeah, no, oh, thank you. Isn't it at like 9 o'clock?
10 o'clock. Oh, does it say 9? Well, I, they, they may be doing something different, but I know they had wanted, 10 o'clock is what they were saying, so. Go at 9 o'clock, that's fine. I don't think they'll, it's going to turn you away. Yes, got to get that going.
It was communicated to me that they're looking for some classic cars, hot rods-
Correct, yes.
At 9 o'clock, in fact, of which I'm going to be taking my 65, I should say my wife's 65 Mustang down there.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, they were wanting some cars, and they're going to have some vendors there and get things hopping.
So it's, it's open to everybody. If you've got a nice vehicle, they'd love to have it down there, I believe. I'm not sure how many will be down there, but-
They're expecting a couple thousand people.
I'm talking about classic cars.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
The couple, the couple thousands the next weekend when we have, we have the show here, we'll have a couple thousand cars there.
No more than three or four.
I do have one quick question I forgot to ask. Next Wednesday, we have a land use hearing scheduled, and do you know when we're going to be getting the material for that?
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Alright, so I just had something to say. I received a concerning phone call from a counselor stating that it was necessary to ban another elected official from documents that should be available to all council members. I know this was done under the previous council, and I was asked to support the continuance of this practice. And first, I want to say that I ran on the belief that net, that transparency is not only necessary but critical for a healthy city. And I feel to my core that this type of selective restraint is not in the best interest of our citizens. When I heard this, of course, red flags were waving and sirens were going off, the first thing I thought about was what are they trying to hide? What is so sketchy and not, and have them not being allowed to look at these documents? And I understand that some of these things are confidential, but I have to believe that there's a way to format these bills so that they can be available as a public records request. We have to be transparent, and right now, because of our history, I think this is more important than it's ever been. And I'm not saying that we want to micromanage staff in the bills. I don't want it to consume staff time, but I have to, again, believe that there is a way to do this so that these records are available. Other cities do it, we can do it too. We need to rebuild the trust, and I think that is one of the stepping stones to creating this trust. So that was it. And thank you to everybody for coming, and go have a hot fudge sundae. I'm going to.
Move that we adjourn then, or each one of us?
Yeah, motion please.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Linda Neese and seconded by Tom, Councilor Mersrow. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:41 PM.